More a list, and if that's the case, then favor.
Motion passes. 2022 fiscal audit year?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Commissioners. We have four items that we're bringing before the Board. The first is the fiscal year audit for 2022. Second topic is going to be microtransit that the Town of Zebulon participated in as far as a pilot program. Third item is we've got some trees that need to be replaced, and we're going to bring forward an option for the Board to consider. And then, as we're doing at work sessions, we'll have a quarterly report from Parks and Recreation. So on the first item regarding the audit, I'll recognize Budget Finance Director Bobby Fitz.
Thanks, Joe. As Joe mentioned, we're here tonight to present the 2022 audit. This is Leanne Bagasala from Malden Jenkins is here tonight to present the results. This is our second year that they've been doing our audit, second year of a three-year contract, running through the current year audit of FY23. Thanks to her and her staff for making it such a smooth process for us. And without further ado, I'll turn it over to her, and then I'll add a couple of points when she's finished as well.
Thank you. Like Bobby said, my name is Leanne Bagasala. I'm an Audit Director at Malden's and Jenkins, and we served as your external auditors for the fiscal year 2022, which is July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. And I will be presenting the audit results tonight. This is a agenda that we're going to go through with the PowerPoint slide. I'm first going to tell you who your engagement team is, so you start to become familiar with our names, and also just go through your audit opinions. There are two opinions that you have in your financial report in front of you. I'm also going to go through a few financial trends, and there are some required communications that are important for me to communicate to you. If you have any questions throughout the presentation, please feel free to ask them at any time. So this graphic is a graphic of who Malden's and Jenkins is. There has been an update to this. We actually are in six states now. We just opened our Raleigh, North Carolina office in October of this year, so we can now serve you out of North Carolina. But we will probably still continue to use some staff from South Carolina because they have experience on the Town of Zebulon. Kind of want to still continue that continuity. From an engagement team perspective, your partner and the one that actually issued your opinion, he signed your opinion, is Tim Lyons. He served last year as well. And then every engagement that we have goes through a second partner review, and that second partner review was Daniel Anderson this year. He's basically doing a clean look at your financial statements. He has no involvement in the audit other than just reviewing at the end. And he is our check and balance, basically. And then I served as your Engagement Director. Just, I guess the title probably kind of throws some people off, but in the capacity that I served this year, I can sign your audit opinion, but I served more as a manager. So the first audit opinion you have is at the beginning of your financial statements. This opinion is, and we issue the opinion, and when we do that, we do consider your internal controls of the town when we're issuing that, but we don't actually opine on the effectiveness of your internal controls. We do our opinions in accordance with government auditing standards as well as generally accepted auditing standards. In our opinion, and the purpose of our audit is to provide reasonable, but not absolute assurance of your basic financial statements. We're basically saying that we do not believe that they are free of material, they are free of material misstatement, but that's not an absolute assertion. Ultimately, the financial statements are the responsibility of management. For your opinion this year, you receive unmodified opinion. That is a clean opinion. It's the highest level assurance that we can give you. And in your opinion, you will see that the policies that the town has, we believe are in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. But our responsibility doesn't extend beyond that financial statement that you have in front of you. There are two slides I have here that kind of go over some financial trends. This is just very briefly. The graph that you see before you is the fund balance for the general fund, and you can actually see that the fund balance significantly increased this year. I highlighted the two of the biggest ones. There was a $1.5 million increase to unassigned fund balance, and there was also an increase of $2 million to restricted fund balance. That increase to restricted fund balance had to do with the creation of a restricted piece for what we call recreation impact. And then this is another graph that just goes over where is your fund balance with respect to your general fund expenditures. So in red, you see your fund balance, which continues to increase, and your expenditures were just slightly above the prior year. So in 2022, your fund balance was over 157 times, or 100, it was great, 150% greater than expenditures. And so that percentage keeps going up. The second opinion we did issue is what's called a Yellow Book opinion. That's in the very, very back of your financial statements. That report is on, we do test internal controls and compliance with laws and regulations. The opinion isn't intended to provide an opinion on the entire internal controls of the town or a legal determination, but we are performing procedures in accordance with the government auditing standards. And you also received a clean opinion for that. What you may be thinking that you're missing from your financial statements is last year, we actually had to do a single audit. That's where we audit the federal and state grant expenditures. This year, the town didn't meet the required thresholds to require that audit, which is $750,000 of federal grant expenditures and $500,000 of state grant expenditures. The town didn't spend that much, so we did not have to do that audit. So the next couple of slides go over the required communications, and I'm not going to read every single one, but according to professional standards, we have to give you this communication, and written and verbal. So you do have this PowerPoint for you if you want to go back and look at all the required communications. The first one is to note that the town is responsible for their own accounting policies, and those are note one of your financial statements. In the current year, the town did implement a new GASB standard. It's called GASB 87 for leases. So you'll see some additional line items on your financial statements this year that relate to leases. And also in your financial statements, there are a lot of judgments and estimates made by management, and some of those are actuarial estimates. And that hasn't changed from the prior year. You have the same estimates as the prior year. From a communication standpoint and a relationship with management, we received full cooperation from town's management. We had no issues or no disagreements. As part of our audit, we do ask them to sign a rep letter that basically, they're saying the accuracy of the information that they've given and also the completeness of it is basically everything we asked for, they gave it to us as complete and accurate as possible. There were audit adjustments as part of our audit. Some of those are what we're hired to do. We are hired to go in there and write your financial statement, so we do post entries to do that. All entries that we asked management to book, they book to their financial statements, I mean, sorry, to their trial balance, so that your trial balance, that your general ledger that you use agrees to what we have issued. And there were no unrecorded or no past audit adjustments. So basically, everything was made that we asked.
Can you elaborate? What type of adjustments your stating was made? Give me an example, please?
Yeah, so the town receives actuarial opinions for their OPEB and their OPEB, Liosa, and elders' estimates, and those get booked to the financial statements when we prepare the statement. So we record those entries, and we give them to finance, and they post them to your trial balance. That's just part of what we do is when we're writing the statements. They're determined by an actuary, though. And the last thing I did want to note is that Malden's and Jenkins is independent of the town and all the respective related parties from a reporting, financial reporting process perspective. This next slide just kind of goes over, there are some additional advisory services that we can perform for the town that would not impair our independence. They are listed on this slide. If there's anything that the town needs help on, any transition, strategy, switching systems, things like that. And this slide here, I would like to say it's never going to change, but it keeps changing. There are a lot of GASBs out there that keep getting pushed further and further back, meaning that we don't need to implement them right now. But we have listed out four here that need to be considered, and the one that's coming up next year is, that will affect the town, is GASB 96 related to subscription-based information technology arrangements. So we will be working with the town to implement that standard, or to see if it is material enough to implement. And also, there are some projects that are pending GASB right now, as like I said, they continue to get pushed out further and further. There is a financial reporting model project going on, revenue and expense recognition, and also going concern. These are further going to require the finance team to do additional work in order to meet the standards. And your partner in charge, Tim Lyons, he's actually on the going concern GASB task force. So as soon as information comes out for that, he will be sharing that with the town. What I have here is, we do offer continuing education for our clients. We've been doing that since 2009. There's a lot of different things that we offer topic-wise, but if anyone needs continued educations for their license, we do provide some of that.
So that would be offered to the Commissioners as well, or just for?
If you need CPE for your CPA license. We can, if you want to give, if anyone wants any of that and wants to be put on the list to receive those emails, we can definitely send that on. We at least do quarterly meetings, and they last all day, if, you know, if you need a lot of CPE. Did anyone have any questions?
Commissioner Baxter?
Super hard to have questions when I'm just seeing this for the very first time. So I don't have any questions at this time. I assume that I'll be able to reach out to you with any questions that I have after I have an opportunity to look at this.
At 4:00 PM, so sorry it's not bound and, you know, presentation-wise, but we wanted to get that to you as fast as we could.
I think I pick it back up for what Commissioner Baxter just said. I think we're going to need this information further in advance, so if we really can have questions, kind of get a better understanding before the night presentation, that'd be greatly appreciated. I don't know who that we would talk to. I guess it's you, Joe, I guess, would be, we can get a little bit in advance, be greatly appreciated.
We shared it when we, and we had to plan this meeting in advance, but what we will do, and maybe this answers some of the questions, we are going to go through this in greater detail at your next monthly meeting, and this is going to be a basis of conversation at your January mini-retreat because it's going to factor greatly into your bond referendum. So we'll be picking this apart, and Bobby's going to give you some areas to focus on to study between now and then.
Commissioner Clark? Harrison? Commissioner Laux?
Yeah, what type of inventory checks do you do as part of this audit?
To check your inventory balance?
Physical inventory.
Your inventory balance isn't big enough from a materiality standpoint to be audited. Would that be something that the Board would like us to look into it, like anything like that, where you have any decisions or anything you just want us to do a double check on, you can let us know, and we can incorporate it into our planning for the next year?
Any other questions from the Commissioners? Comments? Here, none?
All right, just a few other notable points to take a look at on page five, Management Discussion Analysis. Check those last three bullets on the highlight section where it requires, where it mentions the unassigned fund balance, the growth of it, and as she kind of alluded to.
So he's referring to page nine?
Page five in your documents, sorry. Not on the PowerPoint.
Those financial highlights?
It is last three, mention the unassigned fund balance, which is about 8.8 million. That is up about 1.1 million or 15% over last year, about 77% of general fund expenditures. And then note, we decreased total debt by 146,000. Typically, it's about 500,000 in annual payments. So we, you recall, we did at least purchase for the leaf truck and payloader. So that's the 305,000. That's why that's a smaller decrease than usual. And then the note here about our bond rating. Recently, not as of June 30th, so it's not in here, but recently, we were upgraded standard of pores to AA, and are under review for possible upgrade with Moody's right now as well. So just pay particular attention to that whole section, really, but those couple of highlights. And then turn to page 89, where it shows the assessed value. You'll see the last few years have really been growing.
Bobby, can you just hang on until we get there, please? Thank you.
You'll see the growth the last couple of years, we're at about 1.5 billion in FY22, 931 million of that being real property. I think to note, it's not, I think it's in the intro section, but we've seen a relative, relatively large shift. You know, we've always been heavy commercial and industrial. Just two years ago, that was a 72%, 20, 72, 28% split on the industrial side, and this year it's down to 60, 40. So it's shifting towards the residential fairly quickly, you know, to be more balanced assessed value. Just a reminder, your general obligation bonds are outstanding on this campus here. There's 1.4 million remaining on a $4.6 million geo bond issued from 2008. Those bonds will be paid off in FY29. And then we currently have about a 1.3 million in installment notes, vehicles, and other equipment that we have outstanding. And then you'll notice on the balance sheet on page 14, that's a breakdown of our current fund balance. We showed you some totals in the PowerPoint, but you can see the breakdown on page 14 in that balance sheet, where stormwater commitments, transportation, fleet, things like that. Those are portions of fund balance that are dedicated toward future capital purchases. So that's basically it. If anybody has any additional questions, we'll be glad to answer.
Yeah, what did you say about page 14? Because I was looking for it while you were talking.
That'll show on the balance sheet, the breakdown. We showed the total fund balance earlier. The balance sheet shows you the breakdown of what's committed and how much is in each portion of that commitment and the restricted. Leanne mentioned recreation impact fees and the big increase in restricted pieces of fund balance that were added last year. And you'll see those balances as of June 30th in that part.
Is that under the first part that says assets, or that's under the fund balance part?
The fund balance part, yeah. Right, yeah. General fund column, bottom half of the page.
Any other questions? Comments?
The Board, one other comment. If you return back to page 89, I'll give you some little bit of significance and relevance about the numbers that Bobby just shared with you. So when Bobby's talking about the total assessed value, so looking at the column that says total assessed value, that bottom number, that is the value of all the land and buildings within the Town of Zebulon. So a little bit, about $1.5 billion. If you want a rule of thumb, if you increase property taxes by a cent, you'll raise about $152,000, those first three numbers. That's relevant because if you're considering a new program, or if you take out a bond referendum, you'll need to generate funds to pay the lease payments on that bond. So that's something to think about. The other thing to think about, if you look at the row just above that, you look, you'll see last fiscal year's total assessed value. So back then, it was 1.38 billion. So and then, general rule of thumb, every cent raised is about 138,000. So you can see in the past year how much we've increased our margin to take on new programs or to take on inflation by looking at that. So just rough calculation, about 500,000 to take care of margins for inflation or new programs. So there is some relevance to that total assessed value column that Bobby was talking about, and I wanted to just elaborate on that so that when you go into your January mini-retreat where you're talking about the bond referendum, you'll be better prepared and understand what the town can afford.
Any questions? Comments? Thank you. Northeastern Wake County Rule, Micro Transit Service.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Board. Tonight, very excited to introduce Anita Davis and Amber Scott. Anita is the Transportation Manager for Wake County, and Amber Scott is a Transit Analyst. They're here tonight to talk a little bit about the Smart Ride Bus System that you've seen circulating around town. The system originally started as a pilot program earlier this spring, and much to our surprise, it's been a phenomenal success in terms of being able to get the citizens of Zebulon from point A to point B. But with that, I will turn it over to the staff in Wake County.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. Well, evening now, afternoon. Thank you so much, Mayor York, and thank you Commissioners for having us this evening. So yes, this Go Wake Smart Ride NE is a fabulous So yes, this Go Wake Smart Ride NE is a fabulous service. It's a wonderful service. As we stated, this started back in 2019. As we started to think about what type of transportation services are available in the area. We have our regular Go Wake service, which is a community transportation program located here in Wake County, of course. We do on-demand transportation. Our biggest sponsor agency is Medicaid. We do some other sponsor agencies like Child Welfare, Adult Protective Services. And of course, rural transportation where we provide transportation to the rural citizens of Wake County. ED TAO, which stands for Elderly Disabled Transportation, as well as, as stated, employment. So we have a full array of transportation that we provide. But back in 2019, we were just like, okay, what other services can we provide to citizens in the rural areas of the counties where fixed route is not available? And of course, the areas of Zeppelin, Wendell and Roseville, we have the Go Raleigh Express Route, but we do not have still adequate transportation that's in the area. So what I'm going to talk about briefly is we're going to go over the project, of course. We're going to review some of the existing data that we have for Zeppelin, service evaluation, project costs, continued funding. And then of course, towards the end, we'll leave that open for some questions and open discussion. So Wake County was awarded an FTA IMI grant, which stands for the Integrated Mobility Innovation. We started this in 2019 and the goal was not only to develop transportation, we wanted to develop transportation using different technology. So most people are aware of Uber. We have Uber, we have Lyft, we use it on our phones, people who want to get from point A to point B. So what about thinking of a service where people could still utilize an Uber service? But instead of seeing a regular vehicle come to their home, they would see the Smart Ride NE, which is the orange and white vehicle. So with this new service, micro transit, it's going to improve access to jobs, schools, healthcare and other services for Northeast residents. And the main objective is to launch micro transit service that provides a first five mile to last five mile for residents. Generally, you hear about people saying where's the first mile and the last mile? But because the area is still so dense and there are people still can't get to fixed route and they can't get to the express route services. That's why we kind of broaden it out to say we want to be able to do five miles versus one mile. We developed, started thinking about why northeastern area, why Roseville, why Wendell, why Zeppelin? The area met some of the demographics that we were thinking about as far as having low income population, a high senior population, minority population, single to no auto ownership. And the area has, is, of course, is growing and still growing. As I said, we did this in 2019. We've recently had the new census number comes out. So in Wake County, we have well over 1 million people. And in the rural areas, it's well over, I mean, close a little over 200,000 people in the area. What is micro transit? It allows for on-demand, real-time booking when you're ready. So differently from how you book our Go Wake Access service, if you fall under Medicaid, you can call 30 days in advance. Or if you're under our general public service, you call the day before and you pay your $2 to $4 fee depending on where you're going and where you're coming from. Well, this service allows for people to utilize transportation right then. So imagine getting home from work and you're like, okay, I still have to go back out to the grocery store to get, you know, something for a recipe. You go to your phone, you call, you put in the transportation information, your origin, your destination. And the vehicle shows up within 15 minutes to take you to, you know, wherever you need to get, get to. And of course, the area, the, the transportation is free. Not only does, can you utilize our app to schedule transportation, for those who are still not technologically advanced, we really want to confirm transportation by talking to someone, you can contact our call center. So they could call still between the hours of 5:00 AM and 7:00 PM and actually speak to a live person. Where the customer service will walk them through the entire process.
What was that timeframe you said? 5:00 AM to what?
5:00 AM to 7:00.
Thank you.
Yes. We want to do a geo-fenced area because one, we want to be able to control the cost. And then we also wanted to make sure that people are not riding all the way around Wake County just to get to one spot. With our regular on-demand service, individuals who may live in Wendell or live in Zeppelin and they need to get to, you know, the doctor's office or if they need to get to the grocery store, sometimes they would have to ride for an hour and 45 minutes. And they would go from Zeppelin, Zeppelin to Fuquay, to Roseville, back to Wake Forest, and then potentially get to, you know, their destination. Because it's geo-fenced so that, and it's, imagine geo-fenced being an imaginary fence around the northeastern area. So individuals who reside there can go anywhere in that geo-fenced area. So it could be to the town hall, it could be to the park, it could be to a grocery store. But what they do understand is it is a shared ride and they're not going to be driving or they're not going to be riding for 45 and 50 minutes or whatnot. The average ride right now is lasting roughly 18 minutes. So initially, how we got to developing the micro transit, it actually started in two phases. The first phase, of course, was to consult, contract with a, with KFH Consulting Group. And they developed an actual micro transit plan for us. So we had to look at, okay, what does communications look like? Of course, this is a new service. We have to figure out, how do we get the word out there so folks understand that this is a brand new service? It's not going to be here forever right now, but it is something that we're testing to see if it's going to be feasible. We had to develop an operations plan of thinking about, okay, who's going to operate this service? Are we going to use our current vendor? Are we going to go out and bid for another vendor to utilize the service? A capital and technology plan, what's, what kind of technology are we going to use? Well, the good thing is because we were already contracting with Route Mesh that was just bought by Uber. What a great way to go ahead and continue that, that partnership is to continue to work with Uber, have them create the app for us and be able to utilize the service. It also included a five-year financial plan. So of course, the FTA, they're paying for the first year of the service in regards to the operations, the capital, how to utilize the service, they're paying for that. But what happens after that one year is up? What happens when, okay, the service is great, people are utilizing it, but someone has to pay for it, someone has to continue it. And then of course, an evaluation plan so we can actually determine if the service was great. Do we have people continue to use the service? Do we have people calling in saying, we want more service? Yes, it's great. And just based on the information thus far, that we do know that it is something that is great for the area. And then, and also demand is increasing. When we started to work with the citizens and work with the stakeholders, we wanted to make sure that for one, they understood what micro transit is. And we just didn't want to put out a service and say, here, here's a new service, it's $2 to $4, it's free, it's this. We wanted to make sure that when we developed this, that we had communication and feedback for the people that actually were going to be utilizing service. So we talked with the Wake County Board of Commissioners, we did presentations such as we're doing here. We had stakeholder interviews with the, the Human Services Regional Center, like Eastern Regional, Southern Regional. And of course, the main service here at Swinburne. We had focus groups where we had to not only speak with the African-American community, we spoke with the Latina X community. We spoke with individuals from disability advocates, elderly and disabled, everyone that we know would benefit from this service, we actually want to talk to. So with that, we, as I stated, we also had community support, political support from our Board of Commissioners. I do think Mayor York was there as well at our groundbreaking, breaking ceremony back in March. We did surveys to say, to our citizens in the area to say, okay, would you be able to use the service? Would you like it? Do you own a smartphone? Do you just use, do you use a computer? Do you have a regular smartphone? Do you know what Uber is? Part of that was also saying, okay, we do know that there's going to be a, there's going to be some type of break in education. There's, we have to make sure that people understand not only how to utilize the service, but if you've never utilized a smartphone before, you've never, and my mother will still, I think my mom just got a smartphone recently, so and she still won't use it. But we knew that there was going to be a breakdown, that we had to do some type of education. So we partnered with the Cramden Institute, who also partnered with Lenovo to do a senior training class. So the training class was not just to learn about micro transit, it was actually to give them basic computer skills. So they had basic word skills, skills, we taught them skills as far as how do you search the internet? You know, what does that look like? How do you get to Facebook? How do you pull up, you know, the Uber information? How do you make a phone call to our call center to schedule your transportation? We had four classes on, on four Saturdays. And at the duration, at the end of the class, if you went to all four classes and you participated, you actually got a, a brand new Lenovo laptop. So that was a way that we're able to get support from people. And based on the information that we received, it was very, very effective. When we looked at operations, we wanted to access what our current trip data was. As I stated, with Go Wake Access, we usually, for this area, provide about 25,000 trips. I would say pre-COVID, we were averaging 200,000 trips per year. Post-COVID, we're around 160,000 trips per year. We looked at the demographics, we looked at the propensity as far as do we have enough density? Is there enough people in the area that would be able, be able to utilize the service? What are the service characteristics? What are we, what are our goals? What exactly do we want? We want to make sure that the people, we want to triple the number of people that utilize the service right now. Just based on the information that we have, it's roughly 148 unique people before micro transit came along that was actually using the service for Zeppelin. And I think that number has tripled. As I stated, from July 18th to the 19th, and we use those numbers, that information, because that's the most true information that we have. Of course, we're working our way, as, working our way back from the demand of losing services and losing drivers during the pandemic. So these, the 2018 and 2019 are the most true numbers. As I stated, we did roughly 25,000 Go Wake trips in the northeastern area. Employment, 937. General purposes, 4,960. Medical, and that would include Medicaid, as well as individuals that fall into the elderly disabled category, that were just utilizing the service for medical reasons, 19,112. And then senior services, individuals that were going to like nutrition, senior nutrition and senior enrichment. This map here is the geo-fenced zone and it also outlines what the existing transit services are. So we have Go Wake Access and we have the express route, which is Route 33 for Knightdale. We have the 401 Express Roseville. There we go. Talk about someone who's technologically in advance. So here, all of the, the green areas, of course, is the, is the micro transit geo-fenced area. We have Roseville, that's way up here. And then of course, we have the eastern area, Wendell, Zeppelin, and the express route that we provide in Knightdale. We do not provide immediate services in Knightdale, meaning we don't go to every stop around that area. But the express route, we provide free services too. So individuals who not only just need to be traveling in this area, what if they need to get to downtown Raleigh? What if they want to be able to access transportation so they can get to Cary or somewhere outside of this micro transit zone? We can take them to that express route and then from there, they could still maneuver around Wake County. So when did we launch? March 21st of this year, which has been absolutely amazing. We did not think we would have the type of demand that we have. First week, we were averaging 40 trips, 40 trips per week. And roughly today, we're averaging about 225. The Go Wake Smart Ride operates Monday through Friday from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. As I stated, you could use the Uber app or you can also contact the Go Wake Access Call Center. And the best of the service, it is fare-free for now. Now going forward, after the project is over, March of, March 23 of next year, we do not know if it's going to still, if it's going to continue to be fare-free. It is our goal. If we start something that way, we definitely want to end it that way. It is our goal, but we're definitely making sure that we provided all that information to the towns so they can make the best decision for their citizens. So let's look at, compare Smart Ride NE to the town of Zeppelin. So if we look at Smart Ride and right here where it says completed trips. There we go. Right here, where it says completed trips, this is what we have completed and this was as of
March 21st to October 31st.
October 31st. So this is all services combined for Smart Ride. Of course, that's going to include Zeppelin, Wendell and Roseville. So that's all combined. And then here is what we're doing for Zeppelin. And as you can see, Zeppelin represents just almost half of the services that we provide for Smart Ride in the geo-fenced area. The average miles is 5.7 and then per trip is 4.52, 4.82. Total riders, the number of people that's utilizing service, so it's not only just counting trips, the number of bodies that actually get on our vehicles. For all of the service, 500, 5,594. And just for Zeppelin alone, 2,822. And as I said, those numbers are not the most recent numbers, so we know that right now it's a little over 3,000. Yes, sir.
How many individual unique riders, that's total riders, so if I wrote it 10 times, I'm up there 10 times.
No. So what it will do is, so we have information and I do have to apologize with the little technology issues. We wanted to be able to show you guys some interactive mapping that we have. So that you would be able to see what the unique riders are in comparison to what the total riders. So we only are counting unique. So once you ride that one time, you're counted during that duration as a unique. But of course, if you continuously ride, it's not going to say that you had 10, it's 10 of you rode that day. It's that one person that had 10 different trips.
Okay.
This is another map that kind of talks about completed trips for service. For Go Wake Access, and this is just for the town of Zeppelin. 5,000, 5,576 trips that were completed in roughly FY '22. And as I stated, that's just for the town of Zeppelin. For the Smart Ride, 2,381. And that's, that's a huge amount of trips that we're providing. If you see here. Coordinated. There we go. See right here, Zeppelin far outweighs the number of trips that are still being completed. This right here that says Wake County, this includes some of the unincorporated areas. Just based on how we receive the data from Uber, we actually have to scrub that information, send it over to Wake County GIS. So we're able to see what the incorporated and unincorporated. So here are the incorporated areas and this is unincorporated Wake County. Smart Ride trip projection. So what do we think is going to happen over the next few months? So as I stated, this service started March of this year and was probably in around March of next year. And then we'll have about six months of doing some analysis. So we are saying right now, towards the end of the project term, that's going to be March of next year, Zeppelin accounts for 53% of the trips that we are providing. So at the end of the service, at the end of the project phase, we're looking at roughly 7,570 trips. That is a huge amount of trips that we're providing to the citizens of Zeppelin and we absolutely love it. As I stated, these numbers have far outweighed what we initially thought. We knew that the service is going to be great, but we did not realize that it was going to be as successful as it is. Currently, we only have three vehicles and we opted to not include any more, any vehicles, any additional vehicles to the fleet. Because we wanted to get true information, true data, based on the confinement of the project. So if we started with three vehicles, it's just going to be in this area. We didn't want to add a fourth vehicle and a fifth, a fifth vehicle and a sixth vehicle. And of course, we have to also work within the confinement of the, of the grant and the operational costs. Going forward though, we are definitely open to speaking with the town planners to say, okay, do we need another vehicle? Do we need to just include working and providing services to Zeppelin, Wendell only? Because that, they provide the bulk of the services, the bulk of the trips that we're doing. Do we kind of kick Roseville out and kind of let them do their own thing because it's so hard to get up there? And it's hard to provide the level of service that we want to provide to them? Those are all of the things that we're kind of thinking about as we kind of go forward to determine what this service looks like after the project year. to determine what this service looks like after the project year. Year one projected costs. Total cost of the service, so $314,606. That represents what the total cost is to operate right now for all of the, the geofence zone areas. So that is the Roseville, the Wendell, the Zebulon, some of the unincorporated areas, as well as, um, the trips that we provide to the, um, the Knightdale Express Route. Our current contracted revenue hour rate is 4253. As I stated, the service is from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. We do have people calling in earlier, as, as early as 5:00 AM to get their services for six. Three vehicles currently operating. Daily service hours around 39. Annual service days for the year, 260. Annual revenue service hours, 5,000. And the operating cost as, as we speak now is 212. We included capital cost. So we have to think about, okay, what is going to cost if we decide to add in additional vehicles? We looked at if we needed to get radio hardware installed, if we needed to get Seon cameras, um, which are the cameras that we utilize so that, so that people feel safe, so there's surveillance, so that individuals on our services feel safe. The fuel costs, which are not pass-through costs that we give to our vendor, that's something, that's a cost that's allocated through Wake County, through our other grants. Vehicle barriers, these are barriers that we put in, in the Smart Ride vehicles as well as our on-demand vehicles to keeps our drivers safe. Because we're still operating with COVID. Unfortunately, it's something that's not going to go away. Hopefully, knock on wood, there's not another pandemic of something else that's going to come recent, that's going to come soon. Vehicle wrapping. So we included that cost as well. So if we do decide to remove the northeast and just focus on the eastern area of the county, we're going to have to have those vehicles wrapped, re-wrapped again with the new logo. That's roughly $11,655. As I stated, that includes all of the vehicles combined. The Uber technology that we utilized was roughly $42,493. And that's just for the first year, and that was covered by the grant. So any subsequent years after that, that cost is reduced significantly. And we are still definitely analyzing information as it changes on a daily basis. We're almost towards the end of, you know, what that project is going to look like, so we'll have some additional costs, so we can definitely work with the town to, um, update those costs, so you guys can see exactly what those numbers look like and what is going to be going, um, going forward with those numbers look like, what the services look like.
So those capital costs are for three vehicles?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there an estimation how much that technology cost would drop after the first year?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm. So the first year was roughly $42,000. The second year, I don't think I have that, but in the second year, it's roughly $15,000. It's roughly $15,000.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, so how do we, what are we going to do to continue the services that, um, we provide into the citizens? So through Wake Transit, there is a program called the CFA, which is Community Funding Area. And that provides, of, of course, each of the towns in the RTB in Wake County, um, who have limited fixed route to create public transportation for their towns. So the town of Morrisfield created a, uh, created the Morrisfield Shuttle, which is a commuter route. Um, the town of Apex with, which Go Wake Access, um, provides that service for their ADA, new service in ADA, that they just started, um, July of this year. They were able to start those projects and continue those projects with community funding, um, funds, CFA funds. So Wake County as an entity, we would not be eligible for those funds. We do get Wake Transit funds to operate our current services for on-demand, um, for our rural of transportation as well for our elderly and disabled. But we could not apply, we could not be the project sponsor foregoing after CFA funds for the microtransit services. The town would have to be the, the project sponsor. So the town of Wendell, the town of Zebulon, the town of Roseville would have to collectively come together, decide on the cost based on the number of trips that are being provided, and say that we're going to go ahead and apply for the, uh, apply for this project of, through the, the Campo and the CFA, uh, process and go through the entire, um, go through the entire, uh, process of doing the application, doing the review, and of course, getting approved. And Wake County, of course, would love to be that sponsor, we'd be able to be that partner, continue to provide the service. So important dates that are coming up, um, some have already passed. So the call for projects for the CFA opened October 31st, um, and it actually says the 21st, but that should be the 22nd, my apologies. Pre-submitting review meetings, um, were November 14th through the 18th, and they also had some December 5th through the 9th. The call for projects and the application, that process actually closed on January the 6th. Campo staff is going to be doing scores and submissions between the 9th and the 27th. Um, so we, we are right there at crunch time, trying to determine and kind of figure out, um, and continuously to work with the towns to see exactly how do we want to make this service continue to go forward and be of benefit to the citizen, uh, citizens of Zebulon. Lot of information in a quick time, so I am open for questions, comments, concerns.
Can you talk a little bit about, um, the main destinations and locations that these riders are going to and from?
Absolutely. Can you put it up for me, please?
While this is opening, I can go ahead and give you guys some off of the top of my head, some of the main locations that are geofenced within this area for Zebulon. Definitely is the Zebulon Walmart. Um, there are a lot of commuters that come to and from that Zebulon Walmart area, as well as, um, all the businesses around it.
We've also seen, seen an increase in, um, students that, uh, go to East Wake High School. Um, within the last couple of months, we've seen a significant increase. I think we used, it started out with maybe one or two, and then within the last few months, we're seeing multiple students utilize that service. That's a good thing, and then that's not so such a good thing. We, of course, because we are a public service, we want to be able to provide transportation to anyone that meets the, you know, the definitions and that qualifies for the service. But that also kind of provides, you know, that kind of opens the door for, you know, some unexpected things that we didn't necessarily think about when we first started the service. So for example, um, when a parent schedules the transportation via the app, they may say, okay, it's, you know, for one of their kids or one student, and then when the driver does arrive to the school, it's that one person and seven other kids with them. So you know, that's, you know, individuals that age, as my 17-year-old daughter will tell you, sometimes, you know, they get some heated conversations and, you know, it's, well, what do you mean, I can't ride this bus? What do you mean, it's free for everyone? It's this. So those are some of the things that we're kind of working through. Yes, sir.
Any projections what Wake Tech would do to this service with a new campus in Wendell?
Oh, my gosh. Yes. We would definitely need to add additional vehicles. Um, we have not had any recent conversations with Wake Tech, but during the beginning phases of doing the, the, um, implementation and the project work for this, they were included in some of the meetings. Um, and we do know that, um, and don't quote me, but I think the city of Raleigh and some other, um, some transportation plans are trying to include, um, conclude Wake Tech as well. But, you know, we would love to have a conversation with them to see what type of services, not only can the Smart Ride provide, but what on-demand services can provide. But if we would definitely go that route, we would have to, we would have to, um, increase our fleet sizes, and then, of course, talking about what those costs would look like.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, but I think that that's a part of that, that program is to have one, at least one bus, um, specifically just for Wake Tech to Zebulon, back and forth. So, but I, I didn't know that many were using it, going to, to the high school.
A question pertaining to that. Would that be kind of due to the shortage of drivers that we have?
Absolutely.
What we have now is, these students, we have students now that are sitting at home waiting, I mean, literally for buses, okay?
Absolutely. So yes, so not only, um, just with drivers across board, not only just with Go Wake, Go Raleigh, Go Cary, Go Triangle, everyone has experienced a decrease in drivers and a shortage of drivers, keeping them, retaining them, of course, being able to give them a fair wage, a living wage. Um, so that's just for, that's for public transit, but also for Wake County Public Schools, they're suffering and going through the exact same thing. I routinely get emails and texts daily saying, you know, X number of buses will not show up to this route. Um, and that's what we're seeing in the Zebulon and Wendell area where parents are trying to figure out some type of alternative transportation that can get their kids to school. Yes, sir.
This is going to sound strange, but another area's service is mad, has put out several publications that Uber and Lyft is the greatest thing to get drunk drivers off of roads. It's had the greatest impact of anything we've ever done.
Yes, sir.
With that, have you considered expanding this service into the evening, at least during what would be popular nights to keep people off the road and using this service?
Absolutely. So, and that's part of the analysis that we're going to be doing after services over the next six months. So we'll be able to look at and say, okay, do we, do we go beyond Monday through Friday from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM? What does that cost model look like? Do we include more vehicles? Can we do Saturdays, um, a morning service and then predict, and an afternoon service where it goes from 7:00 in the afternoon to maybe midnight? Um, especially during the summer right now, nobody wants to be out. I don't want to be out, but there's individuals that kind of want to be out, you know, the scenery and whatnot. Um, so yes, we would love to be able to provide that, but as I said, that is an additional cost. Um, but we are definitely willing to work with the towns if that's something that we can come to consensus for and say, this is what we can do, then we can kind of work out what those costs and include, conclude that in the CFA application process.
So did I hear saying that each town would need to apply rather than a, a combination like a regional, um, grant for funding for?
So I'm thinking that you would have to do like an MOU where it, all the towns would get together and kind of come up with a consensus of, okay, we're going to go ahead and apply to continue the microtransit services. Of course, as I said, Zebulon gets the most service, of course, so you would have to come up with a percentage of costs that Zebulon would provide, X amount of dollars, Wendell would provide X amount of dollars, and if we decide to include Roseville, they would have to provide an X amount of dollars as well. Um, I do know there is a match amount, um, that with the CFA application process, and we can work with you guys to get that information, as well as work with Campo. Evan Coffe is the individual who's over that program with Campo.
So the application will be filled out by whom? Who would fill it? That would be our rep here?
That's correct, yes. And we're, we're examining this as a, a potential budget item for the next fiscal year. Unfortunately, we don't have the resources, um, immediately to, to provide for. So a lot of this is going to be dependent upon the, the budget. In addition to the information that was presented, um, one of the elements to take in consideration is this is significant, especially in the context of what our citizens are needing in a form of public transportation. As you've seen tonight, half that ridership is coming from the town. With lane use patterns, this is one of the elements that we're talking about. Additionally, taking in consideration future development design, is it going to be something that we're going to require items such as bus stops? It's best to start planning for these now because as citizens become more and more comfortable with the use of public transportation, it'll be a lot easier to implement it in the future if we put that infrastructure on the ground now.
And if we're, we're saying that a lot of this is being used too for schools, um, is that a separate package as far as, uh, school transportation?
Yes, and that's actually, uh, part of a bigger conversation that I know that, um, the county is looking at. And I'm, I'm not privy to the Wake County Public School, um, transportation incentives and whatnot, but I do know that they're, they are thinking about that, and they're trying to figure out what other designs are out there that will be able to help students get to and from the school. Um, so I do know that Wake Transit is thinking about it, um, from a perspective of if we do provide, if, if public transportation agencies do get into the business of doing school transportation, who provides those funds? What does that look like? Does that comes from, does that come from Wake Transit? Is that, does that come from CFA? Or is the Wake County Public Transportation Bond? Who's going to pay for that? And how do you kind of mediate what town and what area gets transportation and who doesn't get transportation?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So that, that's, that's another subject for our Board of Education, uh, representation.
Because I have parents that are reaching out now, they're literally missing work hours just to get that kid to school, get their kids to school. So it's just, it's really getting bad. And they even have a social media page where they have a listing where you can go in and see which bus is not running today. So these kids are actually tracking whether they get in school or not.
It's just a recent, um, alert this morning that no, no buses for certain municipalities were available this morning.
As a parent of a child that rides a bus, there's been more than one time that I've had to drop my son off.
Large conversations are being had around that, and, um, I do kind of foresee that it's, it's, it's going to be bigger conversations that's going to be surrounded around equity and also making sure that the drivers are getting a living wage. Wake County, we, and just recently increased our drivers' wages where they started at $15. Um, now they're at $18. Um, and then, of course, now there's conversations with going forward with the combined contract that we just, uh, combined RFP contract that we just signed with City of Raleigh to do combined services where, uh, the fixed route, Go Raleigh's fixed route and paratransit, uh, we're going to share the same contract with Demand Response. So with that, the vendor that, um, has been selected, uh, part of that is increasing the drivers' salaries again, so.
I believe from the presentation, you said the average ride time was around 18 minutes. What's the average response time once you schedule a request to pick up?
Time right now is a little under 20 minutes.
So you're actually a little bit better than EMS right now.
I'm not sure that's a good thing or not, but we're taking.
Yeah, 20 minutes is the industry standard for paratransit and microtransit, so we are aiming to keep it, to stay under that.
And of course, with the demand just increasing so much, in the beginning, we were at 10 minutes and 15 minutes, and now it's, as I said, it's 18, 19 minutes because the demand is just so, it's just, it's phenomenal.
Yes.
Okay.
So you kind of, like, I say, your Walkmark seems to be one of your big points, places you're going to. Do you guys wait there in a lot? And is that what I'm seeing sometime when they're sitting waiting for that customer to come back out? Or do they go and do other routes and then come back potentially? How does that work?
Absolutely. So it's shared ride. So for example, the driver gets, they have their app, their tablet, and the, the, the ride comes through. And, um, based on who is closer, where they need to get to, the driver may say, okay, I'm going to go pick up, um, client A, B, and C. And then where they're on the way to A, B, and, A, B, and C, they may get a ping on their tablet to say, oh, you have a D rider that just came in, and they're actually two minutes away from, um, from client B, or transportation person B. So they will route, reroute, and go pick that person up, and then start kind of dropping people off as needed.
All right, thank you.
And right now, um, the number of people that are actually utilizing the app to book their services versus actually calling into our call center is roughly 50/50.
Yeah, it is roughly 50/50. We have about, about a thousand, about 1,068 people who are utilizing our call center, and about 1,200 people who are utilizing, utilizing the app in Zebulon specifically.
Any more questions, comments?
Good presentation.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Town Hall Tree Replacement.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Tonight, we are going to talk a little bit about the Town Hall Tree Replacement. I'm going to try to keep it brief since we have had some preliminary discussions on our 101 meetings with you and the manager. Just to refresh, refresh your memory, uh, there, the campus here, uh, when we originally built it in 2007 through 2009, we installed 16 golden rain trees to frame the, the look and to make the campus, uh, Town Hall the highlight. Uh, we did decide to light up eight of those trees at night. Uh, we done that just because of budgetary reasons. Um, and we recently have received damage to two of those, uh, to one tree, and two other trees have been damaged, um, through storms, and they are likely to decay in the near future. Typically, we would not even bring something like this to you, but we found when we go to replace these trees, uh, they were unavailable locally. So we had to start looking at, is there an option to replace these trees? So we reached out to Wildfire, um, Landscape Architect, and asked them to provide some renderings for to provide some renderings for us of some options that we could consider. The first option we have before you tonight is Yoshino cherry tree. The top picture there is 16. To replace every one of the trees that we have with 16 Yoshino cherries. And then, the bottom option that we'll talk about a little later is to replace with eight, just the locations that are uplifted. I know. A second option to look at is what's called the Main Street Maple option. And as you can see there, we have the same option, 16 trees replaced that frame Town Hall, and then the option with a few less trees of eight to space them out a little bit. The tree selection, they're very similar, so I would call this just a personal decision. They can both be purchased here locally. They can, they're both can be purchased in a size of two to two and a half inch caliper. They're basically around 10 feet tall. They cost approximately the same per tree. The really difference is at the end of the day is the color in the spring is white, but it is Yoshino cherry, and then in the fall, color is more of an orange gold color for the Yoshino. The street maple is a green color and then has a more of an orange red color in the fall. Let's talk about the Quanida trees. What's the benefits of having 16 trees? Originally, we went with the 16 trees because we felt like it framed Town Hall better. Also, you get a more dynamic impact on color, whether you're using the maple or the Yoshino. You're getting a little bit of additional impact there. Of course, and potentially for some public events, you may get a little more shade with a few more trees. There's the benefit of going with eight trees. We feel like it's easier to access the Town Hall during special events to get equipment in and out. It matches up with the lighting that we have. It also allows some additional sunlight to get to some Bermuda grass areas where we struggled. And basically, it opens up for better air circulation, promote better root growth, and help eliminate some moisture problems potentially. So, there's some benefits of eight. Based on your feedback during the meetings, we are recommending the Yoshino cherry. We are recommending that you start this process immediately in January when the trees are dormant and the ground is not frozen. We are also recommending that you install eight trees for some of the benefits that we listed. And all the work is going to be done in-house by your public works staff. The cost to do this project is $4,000, and then tonight, we're asking you to approve Budget Amendment Ordinance 2023-20. So, I know that was brief. I know that was quick, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Are either of these native?
My understanding, yes, ma'am, they are.
Both of them?
Both of them. And both of them do are pollinators, so when we do decide to apply for BCD USA, we can list this as part of the application.
We had discussed those two trees that's in front of, one's in front of planning and one's in front of.
Finance department, yes.
Finance. Is that included in this?
There was consensus that for the group to go ahead and remove those, and so, we're planning on removing those. The two crape myrtles in front of the windows, finance and money. But they're not in this. We didn't show that. There was consensus on the group, consensus with staff, so we are going to take those out. Either way, you decided to go on the main campus core there and lawn.
Commissioner Laux.
When removing and replacing the trees, I just haven't made my mind up which tree I like the best.
Commissioner Harrison.
I like the cherry tree and the eight. I think that's pretty.
Commissioner, oh, go ahead.
The crape myrtles, are you guys replacing those or moving those somewhere else?
Relocating those to a park or a public works facility. We feel confident. It could be somewhere else on campus since we bought some additional land, but we find a good location. They are easily can be moved, and they're stout and can handle the transplanting.
Okay, that's, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Clark.
I like the eight cherry trees.
I'm sorry, what?
I can't hear. Oh, excuse me. I want eight cherries.
Miles.
I'm with the cherry trees as well.
The eight or the 16?
The eight is where I'm currently at.
Mr. Baxter.
The Yoshino cherry tree is native to Japan and was brought over in 1902. I would like to see the maple option. Eight is fine by me.
First time I kind of introduced the cherry tree was in DC when they have the cherry blossom, and that was a gift to Washington DC from.
We need to make a motion to approve that. Okay.
Make a motion with your preference, number of trees, and approval of the budget ordinance to fund immediately the replacement act during the month of January.
Okay.
But the cherry tree, you mean you want to discuss?
No, I want the, I would like the maple. Oh, can I make the motion? Okay.
Are we ready for a motion?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to approve Budget Amendment for Ordinance 2023 to install eight cherry trees in January of 2023.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Commissioner Baxter.
I think that we should be only using trees that are native to North Carolina.
Commissioner Miles.
I mean, I hear, I'm good with the cherry trees, just trying to get it like I say, because is there a reason why we chose the cherry trees, Chris, specifically?
There was two pieces. A landscape architect recommended it. It was also a recommendation when we started this process in 2007 and '09. That was the original recommendation from the landscape architect there. We also thought that it done a, you know, it had a good job of giving us a burst of color to the site that would look nice.
The problem with these trees, I mean.
Do not expect any trouble with these trees.
Trees the same?
They're very similar, ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clark. Any comments? Commissioner Harrison, comments, questions?
No.
Commissioner Laux.
I can go with cherry trees this time around, but I hope we plant some maples other areas of town.
I was thinking, you know, is it possible to maybe at some point reconsider the cherry trees in between the, not cherry, the maple trees and a combination? How would that look? Any other questions, comments? We have a vote and a second. We'll have a roll vote. Commissioner Baxter? Commissioner Miles? Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Harrison?
Favor.
Commissioner Laux. Motion passes four to one.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So, this is starting in January, you say?
Yeah. Next, we have Park and Recreation Quarterly Report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Appreciate the opportunity to come to you and talk to you and just provide you a general update about things going on with parks and recreation generally. So, when I originally started to prepare for this, I was thinking I was going to give you an update on our first quarter, and I have that information for you, but I really felt at this point, some of that information might be stale, and I'd prefer to give you, this being an opportunity for us to have a conversation about things that we've been working on and where we're headed, and so, I'll provide some of that first quarter information, but I'm also going to provide you the context of some updates since then as well. So, I don't want to leave out things while I have the opportunity to update you. So, tonight's discussion, I just wanted to highlight some focus of our department really has been to maximize our resources and our impact. And so, this question I have at the bottom is why? So, when I talk with staff and we talk about maybe challenges that we're encountering or why we say we can't do something or why we do something a certain way, I often ask my staff, why is that? And then, we walk through, is what we are currently doing, are we doing it because it's the best thing for our community? Is it the best thing to meet our master plan goals? Is it something that we're doing just because we've always done it that way and we are afraid of like the repercussions of a slight change? And I'll give you some examples of that as we go forward. Our walking program is one that stands out the most to me, and we'll talk about that. Implementation of the master plan is a priority for us. It is the basis, just like the town's strategic plan, of the decisions that we make. We also want to be sure that we are putting ourselves in a position to expand people that we're serving. If we have a diversifying community, a growing community, the needs of our community when it comes to recreation are changing. And what we're currently doing, we want to make sure that we are maximizing how we serve them and how we use the resources that we have available to us. So, some themes that you'll hear tonight are how are we adapting? What are some things that we are changing? What are some things that we need to continue to work on changing? You will also hear about reallocation of certain efforts in time, reallocation of spaces, reallocation of how we work together. Partnership is key to just honestly do just about everything that we do. We cannot do it all. Our master plan hits on that several times throughout the plan that partnerships are important to the success of providing a quality of life when it comes to parks and recreation. So, I'm going to start with updating you some on parks and just talk about what we're seeing with growth. Obviously, when you have a growing community, you're going to have increased use on your park system. We, maintenance comes in several categories, and so, for many, many years, our department had one full-timer and a handful of part-timers. And so, we were really only able to focus on basic general maintenance and reactionary maintenance. And as you have the growth that you're experiencing right now, preventative maintenance is very, very important. The other piece is enhancement. So, as you have that diversifying community, and there's a lot more eyes, a lot more use, the parks are getting used in different ways. There are more people going to public spaces like parks to do things that they might have used to have done indoors, and so, us constantly looking at opportunities to enhance things, and I'm giving you an example of like sightlines, so that could cross over into preventative maintenance. However, it's also an enhancement because it makes people feel more comfortable. If they're in places that have a lot of underbrush, one, it's not healthy for some of the trees in those places, but also, it is creating a sightline issue for park users. And if they don't feel safe, they're going to not be as comfortable. And so, that's just one example, but there are many others. There is a national trend that we're seeing across our industry is that COVID really pushed people outside. They pushed them outside to participate in fitness, to get that healthy lifestyle moving, but also to socialize, and many have found that they prefer it while some are transitioning back to some of those more indoor traditional fitness opportunities and social opportunities. A lot are finding they really prefer being outside. There's a lot of peace and mental health benefits to being outside, and so, there's a lot around that. And so, while I put this here in a park trend in the sense of, that's why, another reason why you're going to see an increase in use of your park system, but it also is an example of how we have to adapt our programming. So, things that we've traditionally had people coming inside for, if they are not returning or if we're growing in our population, but you're not growing in your participation in certain things, you've got to figure out where are they? And so, what a lot in our industry are seeing right now is that we are going to have to meet them in these open spaces and in these park spaces with similar programs that they would have done inside. We have been working on operational revisions, and I appreciate the support of the board for the last few years as we developed our master plan process. We saw some very immediate needs in order to adjust our park operations and get it stood up as a division, ready to provide support to our park system and our users. And we've done a lot of adaptations. We've added staff. One piece, I'm going to give an example of how we continue to make revisions, is that we've not had someone that was on-call. I mean, when you only have one full-time person that's dedicated to your park system, they're kind of always on-call. And that's, now that we have a built-up staff, we are implementing an on-call rotation that'll start in January, and so, this will be anything that happens after hours, on weekends, holidays, things like that. There'll be a rotating schedule so that we can ensure that our staff stands ready. No matter what, we have somebody dedicated to make sure that we can address issues in our park system. An area that we are seeing we need to revise how we are managing our operations in the park system is going to be janitorial support. So, as we continue to grow in use, you have more use on your bathrooms, which requires more cleaning. You have more trash. You have more litter. Our community center is also seeing an increase in use and a change in use, and we are seeing a need to have dedicated full-time janitorial support. People that we can have be responsive. We've relied on part-time staff or contracted staff, a mixture of that, and so, we're going to need to have full-time support in the New York future to really be responsive to what we're seeing in our parks and facilities. I wanted to provide an update on capital projects, and so, we had quite a few improvements to existing facilities, opportunities to enhance parks and provide additional amenities to our community. The community park basketball courts, if you've not had a chance, it was a much-needed resurfacing, and they look wonderful, and we're glad to have that project done. We just adopted our Little River Park site-specific plan. The tennis courts have been resurfaced. The Gil Street shade structures have gone up, and I believe we're finally getting picnic tables in, so we're looking forward to getting those out there. But I wanted to spend some time to talk to you about the Town Hall soccer field because we had such a wonderful opportunity. You had the land around here at Town Hall. There was an established turf field from when this served as the high school, and we had an extreme need to have additional surfaces for our soccer program. And we were able to relocate that fence that really divided the open space here at Town Hall from the parcels that you had recently purchased. And it wasn't very welcoming. It wasn't really open up for community members to use. And so, we were able to remove that fence, but repurpose it and put it around that soccer field, put the ADA accessible walkway and viewing area in. It's just a beautiful amenity, and it was well-used during our recent soccer program. And I just wanted to point out that this, there may be things and continue, we will always look for opportunities like this. You effectively created an additional park here for a very low investment, very similar to what you've done with like alley activation, where you invested a smaller amount of dollars and you had a return on investment that was far more than exceeded. And so, I think here, the investment that you had on creating this field and effectively on creating this field and effectively another park for your community is to be commended. So an update on, well, and I guess I'm going to highlight, the reason why there's red and blue on these capital projects. The blue projects have been handled by the park manager. The projects in red are handled by myself. And so the Little River Park, so now that we've adopted the master plan, we are working on getting the bid packages developed for Phase 1 construction drawings. Also, working on grant development information. But we've also taken over FEMA discussions. Those have been handled by Public Works. And so we will still work very closely with Public Works. But as we move forward with this project, we will move forward with those conversations with FEMA. The Park and Amenities is an ongoing project as well as signs that will be handled by the park manager. We've been getting the trashcans and the benches that we've ordered in. And so as we have the opportunities, we are placing those in the parks. So at Community Park, you may have already seen where some have been placed. I think on that item, I would love to update too. So we had the opportunity to, the same trashcans that we purchased for the park system, there was an opportunity to buy a different kind of lid. And so we are going to be changing out some of the trashcans downtown to utilize those, that different trashcan that we've been putting in at the parks on a temporary basis. If you find you want something else, that's definitely something we can talk about as a town. And then if you don't want to use these downtown on a more permanent basis, then they will go to our park system. But it's something we're happy to pilot for you. We have released our ADA Transition Plan, RFP, so we're looking forward to that moving forward. And the alley activation, I feel like we've talked about that a lot lately. That's the HUD project, and so that's ongoing. But I will continue to work on that for you.
We do have those funds?
That 700,000, so it was allocated to us in the federal budget. We are just working with HUD. We have until the end of this month to submit some information so that we can go under contract. And so that's what we've been talking about. This is something that's new, and I would like to share with you guys. So I have spent some time with Amanda at Creative Cup as well as the Rotary Club recently. And we were just trying to figure out, how do we continue to maximize what open, or what public space we do have downtown? How do we create something that's interactive? How do we make something that's very kid-friendly in our downtown? Creating that gathering space. We wanted something that was welcoming to all, it's very vibrant, timeless, and walkable. And I am not a graphic designer, and so... I, I, I am very proud of this lovely piece that I have pulled together for you, but it was the best I could do. So what, the, the concept that we've talked about was creating, continuing the conversation of butterflies. We've seen that kind of throughout some public art already, and just kind of continuing that conversation a little bit. Spreading out the bistro tables, adding in, I'm, I'm going to go to the next one so you see what I'm talking about. Adding in what you see on this bottom left or the bottom in the middle. These are drums, those flowers, they're actually drums. And so the kids would be able to play them and hear sounds as they're there. Creating a mural along the wall that shows the life of the butterfly. And what we've talked about is where the, the end of the mural would be towards a rindle where you see it kind of taken off and it lands across the street with the butterfly that is in the alley across the street. We also have talked about putting a plant wall in a slate wall or something along those lines where we have time to figure out what that would look like. But also having these hanging butterflies throughout the alley. We actually... I brought a show and tell. So Amanda and I spent a little bit of time just dreaming about what this could be. And thank you. This isn't necessarily exactly, you can pass it around if you want. Just be careful of the antenna if you see it's missing one. But it, this isn't exactly what we're talking about, but it's very close. When we shared this vision with the Rotary Club to see, they, they have potentially funds available to help support a project. It wouldn't fully pay for all of this, but it would be a great start. But Hunter at Design Dimensions said, hey, I have a butterfly hanging on my wall. Why don't y'all come look at it and see if it's what you're looking for? And so when we got there, he took it off the wall and told us we could have it and use to help tell the story of what we're trying to do.
Let's have a quick question about the mural. Do we have rights to that side of the building already? Or we would have to talk to the building owner? How would that work?
So the building owner would have to agree to it. You would want an encroachment agreement. It's something that, it's to my understanding, if you did it on the Creative Cup wall, you would have to, you would have to work with Tom. And he's indicated that he wants a mural on that wall. And Amanda feels confident that he would allow it.
And then we would bid out to artists?
Yes.
How could we technically put, possibly tie into ZDAC? They have a mural funding. Have we talked to those guys about that too?
Yes, so they've been a part of the conversation. They're very interested, they're looking for funding. So this is a project that Amanda and I approached in the sense of how can we bring different organizations together and find funding to make this happen? So it's a community-based project. I told her, I, I don't have funding in my budget to do this, but I'm happy to help facilitate some conversation and bring a plan together in collaboration with ZDAC and others that may be interested in participating. Thanks for not picking on my design. This is great news. Your Recreation Impact Fee since January, when you adopted it, has collected over $2 million. This is fantastic news in the sense of this is funding dedicated to enhancing your park system to meet the need of our growing population. You'll want to remember that these are used for one-time CIP projects. You'll want to focus on new amenities that can't be used for renovations of existing. The purpose of the fund is to be able to reach the new citizens coming into our community. The, I think the most important thing that we consider on how we are utilizing these funds is our master plan identified pockets for future neighborhood parks based on our growth. We really need to start taking a look at these properties and working to acquire, typically a neighborhood park is about five acres. And so we need to just start looking and identifying where these potential areas and properties might could be. In addition, while we're doing that, we're always looking, when developers are coming in, if a property is being considered, if it falls within this realm and is something that we could partner with that developer on. Athletics, this is, I'm going to start out with that, that national trend. What you're seeing across our industry is that traditional recreation leagues have been declining by 50% on average. We're not seeing that 50% decline because we have a rapidly growing population. But the, the population growth isn't necessarily consistent with how we would expect our athletics programming to increase. One of the things, like going back to how, considering why people are changing, where are they going, how are they wanting to recreate? A lot of this decline has to do with multiple working parent households. It has to do with the required, like not every kid wants to be in a competitive program. Some just want to be exposed to it. And so how are you serving them? It takes a lot of dedication of time. And kids are wanting, and even parents are wanting this for their kids. They're wanting to provide multiple opportunities for their kids and not focus in on just baseball or just soccer. And so you're seeing a transition. And we, our community is so small, so you're not seeing it yet, but you will see it eventually. But that's why in a lot of these bigger communities, you see upward bound. That it's a, it's a faith-based program, but they, they get a lot of attention because it typically turns into, it's a, it's a Friday night practice, a Saturday morning game, and it's done. You don't, you're not having to worry about the changing schedule. And then there's some other things that they do different. There's some programs that they'll charge four times what we charge, but they only have programs on Saturdays. So they'll run practice in the morning for 45 minutes. They immediately follow up with a 45-minute game, something along those lines. We, because of our size, and we play with a lot of communities around us, it's going to take us more time to transition to some of these different models if that's what's best for our community, just because the other communities would have to be on board for such a transition. We are seeing a very rapid growth in soccer. So I have provided you a look at numbers from 2019, 2021, and 2022. I skipped 2020 for obvious reasons. We didn't play sports that year due to COVID. But the first bar that you see in each section shows you 2019. The, the brown bar, or the light tan, it's showing you 2022. And so you see a slight increase in your baseball numbers. You see a much larger increase in soccer. You are seeing a decline in softball. Baseball and softball historically is an up and down. It's a wave. And so baseball has been in a little bit, and softball too, has been in a little bit of a lull. It'll come back, it's just, it's just the nature of the sport. What we are seeing because of that rapid increase on soccer, whereas traditionally there was such a focus on baseball, you have four ball fields and they're lit. You have no-lit soccer fields. You have a multipurpose field on one of your baseball fields. But outside of that, that we have a, we have limited availability in field space in general, but definitely in lights. So we are limited. There are times in the fall where it's getting, we only run one practice or one game, but by the end of it, it's already getting dark. Sometimes too dark to be able to play. You have that, that same issue in early spring. It impacts our ability to expand the program eventually. It also impacts our opportunity to provide our fields available for rent because we are limited on when we're able to get our programs in as well. Soccer is very hard on turf, especially as you get older and more skilled players. Turf management is very, very important. So you have to give your fields opportunity to rest. You have to change the way your fields are set up. One tactic that is used is that you actually move your goals around the fields so that the wear of where the soccer goals are in centerfield actually moves around. I mentioned having a steady increase in baseball. One of the things that for many years, we, we have wonderful ball fields. We've invested in making some improvements in the recent years. But we really need to change how we are using the fields and make them more versatile. So we have a lot of permanent mounds. We need to look at transitioning those to temporary mounds so that we can move them and play different age groups and different leagues. So as they grow, we're not limited to just this age group on this field. We can have some versatility that will also help us when we want to be in the tournament realm. I think the other thing that's important to note is that we have a, a need to reinstate the athletic coordinator position. So the numbers that you see, that total for 2019, we had a dedicated full-time programmer that did nothing but athletics. They did support some of our turf management in making sure that the, the lot, the fields were prepped for the games, but that was very limited. We have surpassed what we were doing in 2019. In 2020, when there was no athletics programming and our parks were getting used heavier, we had a need to transition our focus. And we transitioned the athletics position to park manager. We knew when we did that, and with what was coming out of our master plan, that this was not a long-term fix. And that as we grew and as COVID started to go away, we were going to have to reinstate a programmer to support our athletics programming. Not doing so is really going to limit the capacity for our athletics to grow beyond what we've currently got. But it also very much limits the capacity that the park manager has to help support these growing park development, park improvement projects that you're seeing. Administratively, we are really adapting how we utilize RecDesk. And so RecDesk is our recreation programming software. It's, I'll be honest with you, there is not a programming software out there that I know of that is being used that people love it 100%. They all have their plus and minuses. I think that's with any software. We were pen and paper before 2020. And so we rolled this out in 2020 at a time where we, we didn't have heavy programming, so it was harder to kind of get a good feel of how it was working. We will be, we are currently evaluating how we use the software. We know that it has some challenges. However, we know, I'm going to give you the example. We were meeting with Wake Forest staff yesterday, and that was one of the questions I asked because they've been using RecDesk for eight years and they love it. So our staff is actually going to be meeting with them to understand the differences in how they're using it and how we're using it to see if maybe it's user error on our end. Maybe there are some things that we can change on how we put our programming in the system to make it easier. They, they gave us things that they've learned over the years that I think is where we are. And I'm not ashamed to take their learned experiences and not have to learn it myself. So we will be doing site visits with Wake Forest. We're going to be evaluating it with our staff, users. I know Commissioner Baxter has had some concerns with that, so I'm going to reach out to you and anybody else that might would have shared some concerns with how RecDesk is on the user end. We've also launched online shelter reservations. So that was new this year. We wanted to make access to our picnic shelters for rental purposes more accessible, but also on-demand. So in the past, you had to come during typical business hours and meet with somebody in person to fill out a piece of paper and then pay for it. And it just very, in, in, in 2022, that's not very user-friendly. And so we saw a 71% increase in quarter three comparisons. When it comes to our recreation programming, and this is like a working document, evolve as we get more engaged. Some of these are completely new categories for us. This is an internal document. And I think the, the goal here that I'm, by showing this to you is that when we sit down to do our programming, our budgeting for the year, when we're doing the, the program guides for each quarter, we really want to understand what the master plan said was a priority, the age groups that were priorities, and where our gaps are. And so the orange on this matrix shows complete gaps. So that there's nothing hap, or there, when this was done, there was nothing happening there from our department. The light green, there was a little bit of something, but we really needed to improve. The green means we're doing something, but we still have room to improve. I will never put something up here and say that we're doing this 100% because there's always room for improvement. So there's some categories that I think the more we dig into this and the more we research certain things, you, we... we will internally change probably some of our rankings on the gap analysis. But the, the areas in orange and the areas in light green are areas where we really took a focus and said, how can we make sure we're doing something? We don't want to do, we don't want to continue to be in the no area if there is something that we can start moving towards. And we recognize we can't do it all. And so we might have plans to get there, but that's our ultimate goal. We can't do everything that is on that slide I just showed you and we recognize that. And the most important thing for us is going to be partnerships when it comes to expanding our programming. This is not necessarily all inclusive of all of our partnerships, but these are very key partnerships, shows a lot of new partnerships as well. Skyhawks has been a great partner for us. They are providing preschool age programming on a monthly basis. We're looking to expand that to do some older age groups. And that's going to, like we just talked about in athletics where they're not wanting the competitive. We're hoping to work with them to try and reach that need in our community. Tennis Block is another great partnership. They're doing wonderful tennis and pickleball. Clinic or lessons for youth and adults. Eastwick Education Foundation, I'm really excited about this partnership. They've got funding through Wake County to come into our community. And when we first talked to them, they were thinking about once a month. And I was like, the need we're seeing in our community, there's no way that once a month is going to meet that need. And so we were able to get them to try a six-week session. And before the end of that six-week session, they weren't only just looking to continue it repeatedly, but they were looking to add a second day because the program filled up and they had just as many on the waitlist as they had in the class on that first one. If my memory serves me correctly. So definitely a wonderful need that we were able to meet with this partner. The Country Club has been the only way we're able to offer golf programs or programs that involve a pool because we don't currently have a public pool. They've been a great partner in allowing us to use that for various camps. We've also done some clinics throughout the year in the past on the golf course. And so they've always been great to work with there. The Poe Health Center, so we've worked with them in a variety of ways. Most recently, they've done some free senior health and fitness programs. They've also done some family health programs. We'll continue to expand that because I think there's a lot of opportunity there. We worked with Wake County on the Right Before Revival pilot with a mobile market. So that, that's just another example of a partnership. The North Carolina Museum of Natural Science has been a nice new partner. We've been trying to expand our nature programming for youth and families. And so we've had a variety of like preschool-aged, family-based. I believe we tried some adult programming and, and that's been nice to explore. Lots of lessons learned in all of these. Another one that I think is going to be really important for us moving forward is creating this youth service provider network. And I couldn't provide all of the names of the partners in this, but we've worked closely with Empowered Citizens, Wake Med and The Chamber to bring together people providing services to our youth in this community and even beyond on a quarterly basis to just have conversation, have training opportunities, understand what the needs are from one another, what their services are, how we can collaborate and work together. And it's, it's provided some, some really unique opportunities. And so continuing to put effort into this program, I think, will be great. In fact, I've, I heard from Andy with Wake Med and the framework that we've started, there's some funding to address mental health awareness that'll be available in two thousand twenty-four. And trying to figure out if that's something that we want to go after and looking at their requirements. Their, their model is very similar to what we've already started. And so we're looking at the model of what they're working on for this grant project to see if there's things we want to pull from it to start as we move forward with this youth service provider. Not, I couldn't list everything on here, but we aren't stopping. We're always looking for partners. I mentioned developers earlier. They're highlighted in your master plan as priorities for us to make sure that we are seeking these opportunities to partner with developers as they come in, to enhance the service to our community, connect amenities, provide amenities. But I can't discount the partnerships that we have with other departments. We can't do our events we, without just about every department within this organization. And so we appreciate being able to partner with them, but we also work with them to do some of our programming. And they are great supporters in our outreach programming. And I think they're a partner worth continuing to highlight. Another one that we've been trying to work on, just for something for you to look forward to, is Special Olympics. So it's focused in mainly Raleigh and for Wake County. And we have reached out to them to say, how can you come to Eastern Wake? Not just Zebulon, but how do we get this in Eastern Wake? And so we've been having those conversations. The challenges are just the unknowns and everybody is limited on resources. And if we come out here, is it really going to be enough to do what we're used to doing? So how do you kind of work up to that? And so we've been having those conversations as well.
A quick question, with the partnerships that we have, like Empowered Citizens, what kind of funding do we have to give these guys? Is there something or just more so the use of the facilities that they're, that we're kind of supplying? Or is there a combination of the two?
There's no funding with that. So it's just an, it's a network of people working together. And so we have, we, we have provided the spaces for, for them to meet. We are providing the resources just as Empowered Citizens, Wake Med and The Chamber to kind of organize it. But outside of that, there's been no funding tied to it.
All right. Thank you.
Adapting spaces is another one. If you've been into the community center lately, you've seen it done on a small scale. It's something we'll continue to have to do. It's one of the things when we went to Wake Forest yesterday to tour their new community center, we were trying to be very, you know, eyes open in the sense of what we're seeing. We're not necessarily by, building a new community center today, but how can we take what they've done here and how it's being utilized and rethink how the community center is, is being used, both from a facility standpoint, but also from a programming standpoint. We really want to focus on underutilized spaces. And two examples of that would be the classroom and the cardio room. So the classroom, if you recall, was kind of stagnant. It was just carpet, seminar tables and white walls. It just, it wasn't very inviting. We created a, with some paint, new flooring, a different setup in that room. We tried to create a place that people were comfortable in. It's a lounge. It can still be used for the classroom environment, but we wanted to create a more welcoming space where the door stays open. People can go in there. They can make coffee. They can play cards. Moms can sit in there while they're waiting on their kids, you know, to get out of a program rather than just sitting in the gym. So it's been a nice add. The cardio room was underutilized. We moved all that equipment back down to the fitness room and we are changing it to an early education sensory room. We've kind of been opening that on a soft basis so that we can get a good understanding of how the room will be used and how we can further improve it to make sure that we can meet the demand. We are seeing a decent amount of action on the two days a week that we had it open for us to learn from. So that's been nice to see that transition. But we'll continue to look, not in just the community center, but also in the parks. But we'll continue to look at each space and consider, are we using it to its highest capacity? Are there other ways we can use this to meet community need? Team programming, so this is something that across the industry, serving teams is a challenge. However, it's one that we really feel like we should always work to provide service to them. So we have tried some things. We've been learning. So I've, I'm proud of staff for, for getting out there and putting some effort into trying some different things to see how we could engage our teams. We've done some special programming like axe throwing and game trucks. We saw where teen camps in other communities were successful. We didn't necessarily, I think our community might not be large enough yet to have such a focus on teen camps. And the way that we offered it, we're going to have to change. And so what we're seeing in, in what our efforts have been over the last couple of months and where we see through like the youth service provider network is that we can serve our teens by meeting them where they are. So if we want to create relationships with our teens and get a good understanding of what they want, then perhaps when we do certain program or the, some of these specialty programs that we want to do, we partner with the Boys and Girls Club and do it at their facility. Because they have a hard time putting together a special trip where they would bring them to us, but they might would work with us to host something at their facility. We can create those relationships so that when we do offer other things, we can have those teens participate. Another thing is like coordination with 4H or other similar programs. So I'm going to give the example, our teens are very much digital. You're seeing a, a, a change in teens and that when I was a teen, I couldn't wait to get my driver's license. Teens today, some of them could care less about getting a driver's license, even when they're eighteen. They're not going out in the social aspect that necessarily I did when I was a teen. And so a lot of it is very digital-based. And so trying to figure out how can we meet them there? 4H with Wake County, they have some shelf programs that we could partner with them on. So figuring out how to bring that in, like how to start your own podcast or things like that. But another thing we're going to be looking to do is a teen steering committee. So as we create these relationships, find teens that are really engaging and let them plan things so that if they're planning it, maybe they'll, they'll get their friends in. So.
Is this kind of a spin-off from what used to be the Youth Council?
A little bit. So the Youth Council originally started as a grant initiative. Gosh, probably eight, ten years ago. And I don't know that it, over time, as sometimes things do, it evolved into what it initially it started out to. It evolved to where it was very much like a community service organization. So there was someone deciding what community service project they were going to do and they showed up for their community service hours is really what we were starting to see. And so we don't want to go that route. We really want it to be a, a steering committee for teen recreation to make sure that we're doing proper outreach to that community and engaging them.
So that community would consist of teens? I may have missed you saying that. How would you reach out to the kind of curious? The reason why, I'll explain a bit why I ask, I have parents quite saying, say, you guys are always preaching weird. The town is always saying youth, 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 but we're not reaching out to them the way they feel. How, I mean, what do you see as a part, I mean, a director?
That's part of our change in a meeting them where they're at. So rather than, we've, we've been planning it. We're putting it out there. They're, they're not necessarily taking advantage of it to, to the capacity that we would like. And so that's why our transition is, let's try to create those relationships. So this teen steering committee is not going to happen overnight. We're really going to have to put a lot of effort in outreach and meeting them where they are, creating those relationships and figuring out who in the community would really be a, a great candidate to bring on and get this moving.
Tracking. Thank you. Any thought to the schools being involved?
Oh, absolutely. I just, limited space. I put the Boys and Girls Club up here because those are specific after-hour conversations that we've had. But we will always look to partner with our schools and the programs that they have to reach students.
I'd just put a bug out. I think Gary Haley, that gentleman at the elementary school is a great resource for that. I'm sorry, say it again?
Jasmine Perez at the middle school.
Middle school, yeah. Those social workers are doing great things.
Absolutely, they are.
Yeah. They're doing great stuff. Fitness programs, you might have noticed that we've changed how we do fitness programs at the community center. So for a long time, it was just understood there was going to be these programs in the morning, these programs at night, and it, it, it was just a given. But the problem with that, we, we had good participation in the morning, but nights you might would have, it's, it started to trickle down. Sometimes you would have five or six and then you would have like two or three. And it was just this up and down. It wasn't consistent. And when I asked the question, well, why are we offering it? If, if only two people are coming, then is this a resource? Are we wasting a resource here or is there a different way to do it? And so for this particular one, you know, we still hear out in the community, when we pulled back on the evening programs, we'd hear, well, if you did this on Saturdays, we would do this. Well, the history for us is we've offered it on Saturday and then nobody shows up. When you do the one-time, just page you go or just show up if you had a pass. And I said, okay, well, why don't we look at doing six-week? You have to register for a specific program and it's going to last for six weeks. It's not the drop-in type of thing. We'll also do weekend sessions. And we, some programs had a lot more than fifteen, but we were averaging about fifteen participants for each of those. And so we saw a thirty-three percent increase. And, and another one of those national trends is that fifty percent of recreational fitness-based programs have declined following COVID. And so I think for us, I attribute a lot of our increase to adapting to what we've always done. But just, you know, transitioning away that we're not going to do it the same way every time just because that's what we've done for fifteen years. Recreation also does a lot of outreach. And so Popsicles in the Park, this was our second year. We had a one hundred and fifty-eight percent growth, I think, off the top of my head. Our busiest park was Community Park where the fire department read a wonderful book, I think. Is Chris Perry here? I think y'all had to read a book about Peppa the Pig. And they did a great job. And what we tried to also do in going back to our partnerships is we knew that the Eastwick Education Foundation was going to start their programming in September. And so we wanted to bring them to the Popsicles in the Park to start those relationships with families and in our community. And so they came to each one, they did an activity, they met with families, they talked to families. And I think that went over very well. And all, on the four different parks that we visited, we had two hundred and seventeen participants. Gil Street, coat giveaway and cookout. So this was the second year of that. We had two hundred and forty coats distributed. We had one hundred and fifty-five meals that were served. There's a lot of potential for this program to grow beyond what we've done now. I think that there's, going back to that youth service network and other efforts that are going on by other organizations in our community to work together to really build this program up and create those relationships with our community while also providing some resources that they may have. Rock the Block was a new event series that we started this year. So you'll call it was three dates on West Horton Street. We brought in a regional band. We had food and drink vendors. We had about sixteen hundred participants over those three events. We got a lot of positive feedback. I still hear people in the community, just last week, I had someone stop me and say, hey, that was great. You're really on to something and showed their appreciation for it. We've gotten positive feedback from our businesses downtown as well. They really enjoyed it. They felt it had a positive impact on their businesses. So we, we definitely feel that this is something that can grow and can expand. Going into that, we will talk about our two thousand twenty-three event schedule. And this is where I'm going to provide you with a little handout. The first two pages are the quarterly report for July and September. I've talked about most of it, but there may be some other items that you'll want to look at. But if you have any questions about that, please feel free to reach out to me. any questions about that, please feel free to reach out to me. But if you'll flip over to the third page, it says, 2023, a year worth of events, maintaining a schedule. So this list of events and the number that we have is equivalent to what typically one full-time person dedicated to special events does with a part-timer supporting them. So we are blessed to be able to have the resources to offer these events. We are also blessed with community partners that help us with a lot of them as supporters and providing activities. But I wanted to talk to the board tonight about opportunities. So on the last page of the packet that I've provided you, I'm offering a proposed schedule. So our staff is fully prepared to maintain the existing schedule. One thing we do want to talk about in the proposed schedule is shifting our spring market event series to a spring concert series. That's here on Town Hall on this campus. We would have craft vendors and artisan vendors at the spring concert series, but we would also be able to add that to our Rock the Block series. And I think that this is reflective of some feedback we got from our Park and Rec Advisory Board. They were supportive of a proposal to kind of make this transition to a spring concert series. We felt it would provide an atmosphere that would, at the end of the day, be more effective for craft vendors, but it also would create a space in an event that more community members would be able to connect with. We also hear that the community wants to see some bigger events still on this campus. And so we want to continue to focus our flagship events on, with Spring Fest and Candy Cane Lane downtown, but this is an opportunity, if we wanted to shift, we would. And so if we did the spring concert series, we're looking at the third Friday of each month. That was intentional, because we wanted the last Friday to end on Juneteenth weekend. We believe that there's a lot of great energy behind Juneteenth celebrations in general in our community, something that you don't really see in East Wake currently. We believe this campus has a lot of potential to really help support the growth of that event. And if we transitioned our resources to help build up the Juneteenth celebration, we have, I met with Harrison Todd, with Todd's LLC, last week to just kind of gauge if this is something that they'd be interested in, because they are trying to build something up. Last year, they did the Juneteenth Parade, and they wanted to do a Kids' Day downtown and a couple other things. And so we met last week to just talk about if you did something here, what it could look like, how we could work together, and we had great conversation there. Another thing that we've heard is a lot of energy around doing something on this campus around the holidays. And one of the things we'd like to throw out there, and we would have to figure out exactly what that would look like, but a winter celebration here, it might be like a caroling and candy cane drop, there's so many things it could be as an alternative. And so I would be happy to entertain any questions and hear your thoughts on what the proposed schedule would look like.
I can't say I'm surprised, I feel like you've been trying to get rid of the market now for a few years. There wasn't even a present market manager for quite a few of the days this past year. I think it's disappointing that we don't have more support from the town, especially since the board directed staff that they wanted a market. I'm disappointed.
So are you, you're proposing to take away the market, the artisan market altogether, and replace it with the spring concert series?
Yes. So that we could, the challenge with an artisan market is the, I don't know that the market that we have to work with can be supported on a weekly basis. And that was a concern that I expressed last year. It is also something that you're seeing in the private realm. In the discussion we had with the advisory board, you're seeing a growing private growth in having opportunities for artisan market vendors. And I'll give you the example of the Zebulon Night Market. So it had the same challenges that we had, started out great, but then as time went on, it declined a little bit. And I think part of what you're seeing is that it's the consumable good in that timeframe and what you're offering. And we feel, and the feedback, because I have, I mean, there's several on the advisory board that have participated in markets, not just in Zebulon, but other areas, and they shared that same sentiment that we could probably provide a better platform for vendors to connect with the community by combining it with something like concert series, or along those lines.
But you're not necessarily combining, what you're saying is transitioning it, so transitioning the market away or out of the picture altogether, not necessarily combining it. Do we have any kind of data or that we can look at as far as the artisan market, so that we can see trends, like how it was going before we looked to make? Because personally, I really enjoyed it. I enjoyed the local vendors, I enjoyed people that were selling local, I enjoyed it. And so I would like to see, I would like to see what it looked like, I would like to see numbers. I understand how you feel, but I would like to see numbers before we make a decision on whether or not we want to transition away from it. Before, you know, I just think that we just need a little more tangible evidence before we can even look to even make that decision.
Parks and Rec had someone that was supposed to be the market manager, and she just didn't show up. We also, if we want to look over at the Wendell Night Market, does absolutely incredible. It's fantastic. I feel like there just hasn't been the support from Parks and Rec to want to do a market. And so every year, Parks and Rec has been chipping away to try to pull away from the market. Whether it's moving it to a downtown parking lot, where there's nothing but street noise and bad air quality on top of hot pavement, or shoving it into an alleyway where there's not a whole lot of visibility. And then finally moving it back to the municipal center, and then after moving it three times in as many years, saying, well, there's just not community support for it. I think that that's challenging to, for me, to accept that there's good data.
Okay. So it sounds like you all have, we've moved it a few times to get, to see maybe where the best location, or where we can get more people, or more community, you know, intake, or, you know, community participation. So it sounds like it's been moved, and we're trying to figure out the best place where we can get the most participation? And are we just finding that the participation in every location is not good? I mean, what, since it's been moved so many times, are we seeing a trend in participation that is, that is drawing us to the conclusion that we need to transition away from it?
The reason why it moved downtown in 2020 wasn't because we wanted to move it from downtown to try and kill it, it was the fact that you were dealing with COVID-19. When we were getting ready to open the market, we, people were very, very hesitant. Because when you think, when COVID really kicked off, is about the time we were supposed to start the market. And so we had, off the top of my head, maybe 10 vendors that were willing to take the risk. If we had put 10 vendors on that lawn, it would have looked very, very, very small, and it would not have looked, it would not have provided the feeling and the ambiance that anybody would have felt it was successful. And so that's why the transition to the downtown lot was made. It wasn't in an effort to kill the market, it was just simply because we were having to respond to COVID at that time. The reason why it moved to the alley was because we had just renovated that area, and we had done the winter market there to see how it went. And we had a lot of great response and feedback from that, and people thought that it would be a good location to keep it downtown and to move it over into that area. So we worked with them. There were some challenges that we experienced, that turned into a construction zone towards the end, that at the time wasn't really in our control, we didn't expect that to happen. And we moved it back here at the direction of the board to continue the artisan market. And we have data, we'd be happy to share it. And as I previously shared before I showed the proposed schedule, was that we're fully prepared to do the, just keep on going. We're prepared for that. You mentioned the Wendell Night Market, that experience and that ambiance of an evening.
I'm sorry, I don't want to know about the Wendell, we don't need, Wendell, we're, let's focus on, I don't mean to cut you off, but I know we've said a lot of times in our meetings that we just want to focus on the best for a Zebulon, so I just want to make sure that we're focusing on what the best outcome for Zebulon is going to be, instead of looking at the other things that are going on. How can we best serve the citizens in our community in this particular arena?
The only reason I reference that is because Commissioner Baxter said we should take a look at it, and we have. And I think that what is helping that market be successful is consistent with what we are recommending by transitioning to a Friday night, once a month concert series, that really creates a different environment for the community to come together. And I think that, like, taking that into consideration will be important.
Okay, thank you.
Now, it's nothing set in stone anyway, correct?
No.
Just conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Just a thought, is there any way we could do some type of an artesian market Friday night at the concert series, since we already have all those people here?
That's what we're proposing, we think it would be more beneficial for the artisans at the end of the day to transition to that, that setting. And I mean, even if there's a hybrid, if you said, we love this idea of a spring concert series, but maybe we don't do the artisan market on a weekly basis, maybe you, because I hate to share Wendell, it's once a month, off the top of my head, I believe it only occurs once a month. So there's, you know, maybe, I just would like to hear from y'all, where, what you think would reflect the community.
For me, for me, I think it's just a matter of figuring out, like, when I come out to the market, sometimes there was not a lot of people there, you know what I'm saying? Because I felt bad for the vendors, so I would buy just because to make sure of the support, because I know that, I'm sorry, Ted, yeah, just buy to support. But I'm trying to figure out how we can, how is it that we can get more people to participate in that, where they're buying more. These vendors, I know they, they're excited to be here, but just trying to figure out how to make it more money, you know what I'm saying? They're for that purpose. And like I said, a concert series, they blend it too, possibly would have been an asset to those guys, I don't know.
Commissioner Clark?
The artisan market, I think it might do better if it was not, not every Saturday. I don't think, you know, people want to come every Saturday. Because people, it's the things you have, the types of booths, and I don't think that's something that, you know, you want, but every other week, or do it with the concert, do it like that. I don't see it doing it every Saturday.
Commissioner Miles?
Assuming the vendors would set up for around, what, three to four hours on a Friday night? Have we talked to them? Are they willing to do that after a long Friday workday to come and work a vendor market for three or four hours?
From what I have seen, yes, in other events in our area, our experience with events. Honestly, the farmer's market got its start from a Friday night on the lawn event. So it was, we set up, you know, farmer and craft vendors, and we had a stage up front. So honestly, it kind of, it involves us back to where we started. And I think that a Friday night once a month is doable. I think you're seeing it in other communities already happening, these vendors are doing it in other areas already. They're even doing it on weeknights, like Wednesday, Thursday timeframes as well.
I've got nothing else.
Commissioner Miles?
As far as the vending part, I mean, the market part, I think we kind of can have more discussion of that later date. This is just a proposal. And then I'll touch basically on the Juneteenth, because I hear the community saying that, mixed things, I hear some say they're okay with transitioning possibly to the Town Hall, but then I hear some say they want to continue your parade aspect, things that they really look forward to that. And they kind of tried to figure out, when I say they, citizens that come to me about it, saying, okay, last year we should have been where it was one central location, like where we had something here, how could we have potentially blended the two? So where they wouldn't have to run between the two places, so they lost, someone lost that, kind of like what was going on downtown compared to here. So we're trying to figure out how to merge those two, and get you that feedback.
I agree. And just, June is a very hot time to have a street event, I mean, it's possible. But I think that's another thing that we, when we are meeting with community members and we talk through what we want to do, but I think there's room for partnership.
Because I really look forward to, like I said, it's coming from a group of people potentially that really didn't have an opportunity to have anything downtown. So that downtown is viewed as something like, okay, yes, as I stated to you before, you know, this group of committee don't even think they can rent out the community center. So this is all new to people, they're having a voice. So doing, what we're doing now is very important, and I appreciate you for what we're doing so far.
Absolutely. And I'll share, as I shared with, I shared with you probably about a year ago, that when it comes to a Juneteenth event, I believe it's something that is very emotional in of itself, and that people are very passionate, and that it absolutely deserves community input and development, that's the only way for it to work. And that was what I shared with Harrison last week, that if the board transitioned, that the first thing we would do is bring community members together to develop it.
Yeah, comment and a question. The Rock the Blocks have been fantastic, and the one comment I always hear from people is, we should do something like this every month. And we're getting very close to having something every month. Along with that, have we had any talk about St. Patty's Day? Has anybody stepped up and want to take the lead on that?
Yes, you'll see that at your January meeting, so that would have not fallen into the special event standards calendar yet. And so you'll have a request in January for that.
One other follow-up question, I'm with you on soccer, and with the Park and Rec Impact Fee, which I think is one of the wisest things we've done, have we considered some artificial turf fields that could actually be used year round, and not one field, but at least two that would be artificial turf?
Absolutely. So I think that's something, when, if we were to fully follow the Park and Rec Master Plan, the next fields you would potentially be able to be at Community Park, unless another opportunity comes up. So I would definitely recommend that when we build those fields, we look at artificial turf. Maybe not for all of them, but for, you know, some of them. And it's, we're also happy to consider, you know, if you want to transition some of your existing fields to an artificial turf surface. existing fields to an artificial turf surface.
Two million dollars, and I know you see that two million dollars, and really like to see what the plan is.
Absolutely.
Kind of on the back of it, I know you mentioned something about doing things at night. Have we considered maybe portable lighting to facilitate having events at night?
Yes. So that's actually something that I've advised staff, that as the program continues to grow, we're going to run out of daylight. We already are. And so we're going to have to put light trees at some of these locations so that we can continue to play, until we can have a more permanent solution.
So it's my understanding now, we just rent those, those portable lighties? I had another one. The pickleball versus tennis courts. We'd only have two tennis courts, and I see where we are moving pickleball to outdoors, and that's kind of cutting down on the tennis court availability. Any thoughts?
Yes. So that is the industry national dilemma. Tennis ball, pickleball, how do you make them mesh? How do you make them work together in a positive manner? So we're trying to learn as much as we can from our industry partners to make sure that we don't create a bigger issue. And so I believe as you evaluate what you're going to do with the Whitley Park property, ultimately you'll need to build pickleball courts in the short term. We, so I'm going to go back to the example of walking. We, we have painted lines for pickleball at the community center, but the availability is very limited somewhat by our own doing, just out of long-term practice. And so we are going to have to really take a look and evaluate what programs we've done for what times and to the amount that they have, so that maybe we need to adjust some times to create times for other users and other purposes. And so while our daily walking program is wildly successful, and it has been for many, many years, and we have no intention of getting rid of it by any means, but right now it has dedicated hours in the morning and dedicated hours in the afternoon, but you can't play basketball, or pickleball, or other things while, they just don't go together. We don't have a raised loop. And so some of the things that I've tasked staff with is, don't be afraid to change hours for walking, or hours for something else, to create additional opportunity. So we have the lines painted at the community center before we create a very contentious user conflict out at our tennis courts, because we only have two. And I already get complaints about there being too many people wanting to play from time to time, that before we create another issue there, we really need to try and figure out if there's room where we already have lines painted to increase how we serve that community with that interest.
Yeah, I can foresee that being a conflict, because I've already gotten some, some talk about, there's not enough tennis courts. Now pickleball is moving in and taking away the other court. So I don't know if we can use some of our existing basketball courts to transition outdoor pickleball, just a thought. Anyway, that's a challenge.
Commissioner Miles?
One thing, speaking on different sports and activities, I heard you speak on soccer. One thing that I'm getting from a lot of citizens is the actual football aspect of things. Now with that park impact fee, I think it would be a great opportunity where we potentially can support that a little bit more, because I'm getting a lot of citizens coming and saying, okay, they're wearing out the name Zebulon, but they have zero support from Zebulon. So they're trying to figure out what we can do to kind of work that, I mean, I know you can't answer it now, but just putting it in the wind to my fellow commissioners, that we really take a look at that. I know personally, that is what kept me when I was growing up in Zebulon, that football kind of made me who I am today, and was a part of that anyway, just kind of like the growth aspect connected with the community. And those guys are still, they're lacking now in funding and trying to figure out, parents are buying gear and support, and they're wearing the name Zebulon. I think we can find a way somewhere to give them some support, some, some shape.
I think there are a couple of teams, aren't there? There's one up in Raleigh Hill, Raleigh Hill has one, and then we have our own.
Right. But they get, they get.
They didn't, they didn't play this year because they didn't have enough players, and it was a lot of different issues going on. I think one of the biggest things is a field, so that's something that definitely, if we can have some conversations about that, want to support them.
I don't think we can, we won't be able to use recreation impact fees to support, like, operational items for them. However, I mean, we do have a multipurpose field that they've used in the past, and so if that is something that, when they are prepared to go back to, I mean, we've supported them in the past, we'd be happy to work with them again.
Commissioner Harrison?
When you say you've supported them in the past, what does that mean? Because we, we're not, when you say you've supported them, the football program in the past, what does that look like? The multipurpose field, is that something that is like, oh, I guess it's a bunch of different teams, so it can't just be the one field, because everyone can't practice on the one field. So is the issue that you're seeing coming from the program, like, where do they put them, the different teams? Are they struggling to find places to practice? Is it, what are you seeing as the issue? Because we know what we're hearing. What are you actually seeing from this program?
Current football program?
Or the lack thereof, or because there is a lack of it?
I think organization.
Thank you.
I think it's, I think it's just a matter of getting the citizens to sitting down, and we sit down and hash it out, because, because we're getting, I'm getting a lot of people coming and saying, okay, they want the football, but they don't have the support of town of Zebulon, they were buying, parents were buying gear, parents were finding a place to practice, they were paying, I think, the middle school X amount of dollars to do that, and things like that. It's just communication, I think, that is. Thank you.
Sheila, I have a gentleman that runs the, some of the football up in Knightdale, and I don't think it's sponsored by the town. It's some kind of team thing. But I'm going to give you his name, because he, I mentioned to him about our football wasn't, and he said, tell the people to get up with me, so then we can give them to, to you, because I don't think it's, I've never thought of it. I think it's got to be done a separate way.
I think that you.
I was just going to ask Commissioner Clark, how is it that we can support soccer, basketball? Football is just another sport.
Football isn't another sport. Well, you want to do flag football, but if you start thinking of pads and all of that, and you can't expect the town to. It was just.
I'm just kind of curious, and, I mean, I don't think enough has been here, but when I played, I know the town supported it, and we were, my gosh, we were a lot smaller then than we are now.
I'm not sure if it was the town or the people that.
It was Park and Rec. I played at Keith.
But Park and Rec was volunteers, and your volunteers, like Keith Temple, and W.G. Griswold and all that, that's probably where most of your money came from. It didn't, I don't, come from the town.
Wow. I mean, we paid, I can remember specifically having to pay to Park and Rec to play, because that was, it was seven of us, and my parents, that was a struggle to get that, to get that fee. We would have to fundraise and go to church and do everything else to get the funding to cover it, so I.
But it was still volunteer. It was not, yeah, it was, it was all volunteer back then.
It was the, more than likely it was the Parks and Rec commission.
Yeah, it was whatever those men ran, yes.
I speculate the year, but I can't, I mean, it transitioned from a group of volunteers to a town department in the 70s. The, to answer the question of, I'm just trying to put my thoughts together the best way possible. So for the town, we're not big enough to run an all internal football program, flag or tackle. We wouldn't have enough players, enough volunteers to be able to do that all internal. And so you would rely on playing other communities, which is what you currently see. We, we play with other municipalities. There are no other municipalities that have recreational football leagues in the general area. And so that's why you have so many of these private-led football programs that are well-established, and a lot of them do use your park facilities. And up until the current group dissipated, I think some of them went to Bun. I don't know, I'm not exactly sure where some of that, some probably went to Wendell. I mean, they played at, I think we had practice and games at Community Park. We stored their equipment for them, so there was just a variety of different ways. And I think that if that group wants to get together, I'm always happy to sit down and talk about what it is that they're wanting to accomplish, and how we could work together, because back to partnership, I mean, we can't do it all, and we can't expect the town to do it all. We do need to create those partnerships. If we're going to properly serve our community, it's going to take those types of collaborations.
Thank you.
Any more questions, comments?
I just have one last question.
Commissioner Miles?
As far as the aspect of, I heard you say we're getting together for the bid proposals. Can you explain that to me a little bit, how that will work when they start bidding for that Little River? Will it be announced? How the process completely?
Yeah. So I'm still in the process of developing that. I was getting that ADA one out first. So ultimately, there's state standards that we have to follow, and so we will follow what those are. So we'll have to, if my recollection of when I last looked at the process that we're going to have to use, is that we're going to have to go with the lowest response bidder. So you'll put packages out there, you send it to a wide net, you post it on your website, you just post it where people that do that work are going to find it. And they'll have a period of time where we have a meeting, have a conversation, so they can ask questions about the project, they can ask questions, we can give them as much information as they need to give us the proper quote, and we receive them by a certain deadline, sealed, and then you open them in what's considered a public manner.
Who will have the final say on that? When it comes in, okay, we take a look at all the bids and say, okay, we're going to go with Jimmy, whatever, construction company? Who, that would be you, or who would have that final say?
Depends on the price point. There's a certain price point where the board authorizes that. I would expect that for the Little River Park one, that would come to y'all for authorization.
And I'm sure there are guidelines as far as who, as certain criteria you have to have in order to be able to bid for these projects. I think that would make me some information that we might want to take a look at.
That's going to be in a packet, that will be in a packet as well.
And I know a lot of times, some of these smaller contractors, they may not have the proper insurance, or the bonding that's necessary for, depending on the price of the project.
My question would be, how can we do, like we've talked before, about getting some of these local businesses, or whatever, just business in general, kind of set the standards, let those guys know where it's going to be needed, as we come out and kind of get them, say they do need the higher insurance. He can give he or she them time to go out and get that insurance, so they can be, be players in this thing as we go, come along. Because you do have a lot of local vendors here that are, that are doing business that's going to be needed for that park. I think sometimes we go local, they're going to take a little bit more pride in that, if they're fixing that park, I'm working on a Little River park, they're going to look at it through a different set of goggles, as I was saying, just, just give them opportunity at least. Do we have timeframe to do that? Or if we send, or if we kind of?
So there, there might be a little confusion. The design process won't be the, like, it'll just be the design drawings, and so some of what you're talking about sounds like it might be the actual construction of the park. And so that's going to take, that's going to be a little bit out there. So there's time for, if you know anybody that wants to do business with the town, I'd highly encourage them to come, you know, talk with myself, or Chris Ray, and just send us their information. We get that often.
But it's kind of what I'm doing with Chris, and I think I've shot a couple, kind of got him that way. Okay.
So typically, with those processes, as far as getting them prepared, knowing what, there's a lot of programs with Wake Tech, and like, sometimes you'll see it through Wake County, at Eastern Regional Center, they've had a program with somebody that does business development. And so those organizations are helping small businesses figure out how to prepare themselves for bidding processes.
So it sounds like if we have a coordination, possibly with, was it at work? Something works at, through the community center, if we could provide them with that information, so that they could provide it to their constituents about, how can you best be prepared to be available for some of these grant processes?
If you're talking about smaller contractors, they could always get with the larger ones to see if they could be a sub under them, and work that way.
I was saying this also, you have, like, we have, just prime example, we have, we contract out our cutting grass over at community center. What are those standards? I've yet to see. I just, I would like to know myself as well. What are those standards that we set? Okay, we hire, I mean, the contractors for cutting grass, what is that standards that we, the checklist, okay, I want to go with this guy, that guy, just for my understanding as well.
Yeah. I mean, you just have to let them see that.
Right. Just knowledge. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Alex? Commissioner Harrison? Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Baxter? Commissioner Miles?
No. Thank you. Great proposal.
No other questions, comments? We need a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Commissioner Harrison. We need a second. Thank you, Commissioner Miles. All in favor? Adjourn.
Thank you. Good job.